All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here. Sorry, here. My microphone on. All right. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Wong. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is fine. It's the minutes.
Minutes for last name.
It's the minutes from last meeting.
Yeah, we need, I'm sorry, we need to do one correction from the last meeting. Mayor was not here. Councilmember Tim Cole was acting man or mayor at the time, so we just need to update those minutes. But otherwise, we're good.
But if anything bad happens, John's names and writing.
That's right.
We'll have to put a 10-minute penalty timer on here. 21 minutes now. All right. So go on to the...
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, May 21st, 2024 workshop minutes. Item B, May 21st, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $502,288.66. Item D, HRA claims, $12,999.14. And item E, 2024 tobacco sale license renewals.
All right. Anybody like to pull any items? If not, can I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next part is open to the public, but I don't know where I'm gonna, where I was gonna put this in, but I just wanted to do a little reading of what the council, as far as the city, what we went through over at Casey Lake. We are all saddened by such senseless violence experienced that up at Casey Park on May 25th. The public, you know, we wanted to, we had the police chief here. He spoke some changes that we want to be able to do the parks as far as hours. And we just wanted to understand that it was a terrible situation. And we're looking at different ways that we can improve and also look at hours in different ways. Were able to, to help us get through this. And like I said earlier in the workshop, we had a family, the North St. Paul family, that had a graduation party up there at the pavilion, had a beautiful ceremony. And unfortunately, all this unraveled around them. And we, our thoughts and prayers are with that family. It was very trying. And we just wanted to understand and be able to tell the community that we're looking into hours and some different things. So just wanted to do that before our public, public address here for open to the public. So open to the public at 6:39. John Schmal. Welcome, sir.
John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. I can't believe it that there's no one here about what happened at Casey. What is wrong with the populace in this town? Do not show up here with torches and pitchforks and say, "You gotta do something." Nothing. I've been doing this on Casey for 10 years with the fireworks. Nothing has been done. It just continues. And for once, you actually have a police chief here that has had it, I could say. Just had it right up to here with the force that he has and everything else that's associated with it. That, I remember one time they wanted to license backyard fires. And this room was overflowing with people. And they changed it that you didn't have to get a license to have a backyard fire. I've been doing this for 10 years and saying, "You gotta do something." And now I realize when what the chief says, we are a target. We're dummies. People are coming from all over to shoot off fireworks. And now they're shooting. I was home. And when that damn pistol went off and was full automatic, that was scary. Something has to be done. In the bigger picture, yeah, we can't have these guns. But what are you going to do to not allow this? And how, I'm thinking about, you know, okay, we're gonna close at sundown. Who's gonna close? Who's gonna throw these people out at sundown? They're not gonna go home. I, I don't have a solution, but we gotta stop this somehow. It is ridiculous. The chief needs some help from you people. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
All right, anybody online? Do we do that anymore? Okay.
I ended that last meeting, too. That's how we got done early.
That's how we got done early. There you go. All right, city business action items?
Thank you, Mayor. No public hearings this evening, so move on to city business action items and recommendations. So we have the 2022 street and utility improvement projects. We have city engineer Morgan Dolly here to speak to it.
Welcome again, sir.
City manager Frandl, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is a housekeeping project closeout item before you here tonight. This is the closeout on the 2022 street and utility improvement project, which was city projects number 2202, 03, and 04. Just as a reminder of the streets that were included on that project. That was the parking lot adjacent to Sixth Avenue, portions of Sixth Avenue and Charles Street. And then in a separate area, 10th Avenue, Third Street, and Second Street north over by the high school. And then a third area over by Flanders Road, 13th Avenue, Spirit Hills Lane, and 14th Avenue north of PCU Pond. You may recall that we did consider and city council approved a change order just to include some additional quantities for things like additional curb and gutter that was needed to be completed. We had some soil corrections. On the upside, though, we did not need all of that extra work or allowance, I guess. So as a final payment here, we're coming in over 6% under, over $100,000 under that revised contract amount. So we tried to overestimate to make sure that we were coming in at this point with the final payment. So the action in front of you here tonight is to adopt a resolution for the 2022 street and utility improvement project, authorizing final payment to Batuminas Roadways. And with that, I'll, and I should say that the payment, which is slightly less than $20,000, is really just releasing retainage and about $2,000 of just minor modifications to some of the pay quantities, which the project has pretty much been done for quite some time. So we finally got in the final documentation from the contractor to close it out. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Wong. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Morgan.
Just hats off, Morgan.
Yep.
When Lisa and I started, I think we had these, where we had like seven-figure checks that we were writing after the, after the three streets were done. So congratulations to you and Al for keeping it as tight as you did.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, next up, reports from city manager and departments. Met with the staff today. Electric department was busy over the holiday weekend. They had a vehicle accident on McKnight that took out about 160 houses. They responded and had the power back on within an hour and a half. Great work for those guys. They are still working out on Lori and Ariel, or Ariel area. And they're doing primary underwear, underground wire replacement. That's lived its useful life, so they're moving along with that process. There's still a little bit more to bore in over there with the contractor. Our apprentices are doing great. We got one moving into their final year of their studies and one just getting halfway through there. They're doing a great job. Finance's been busy with, working with our new directors and getting people up to speed on how our budgeting process works. So we're working with them. Public Works, we got our horticulturist that started today. So we'll start to beautify the downtown and city hall and places, which would be great. The EAB process is moving along for removal of trees. They've got 40 of the 50 that they had planned to get done for the city. They just started with the private trees here this week. Looks like there'll be about 32 of them to be removed. So get that process moving along would be great. Trying to stay ahead of the grass growing like crazy right now. Student Bill House is really getting down to the final touches now, so it won't be long. Don't have a final date yet for the open house, but it shouldn't be too much longer. Fire Department's been working with the vendors for downtown, especially with the food vendors, with the car show coming up this weekend. They're working with single-family and duplexes for the fire inspections. And on June 29th, they'll be hosting the fallen firefighter ride that they put on. So we will just help with the registration. That morning, they'll be able to park across the street and not to block the fire station or the police department at all. But be able to use the city for that. And they'll kind of escort them out of town for their, for their ride. So that'll be nice. So we started summer hours yesterday. City Hall will be going, or has started the Monday through Thursday, 7:00 to 4:30. And Friday, 7:00 to 11:00 will be closed after that. Update on the water appropriations lawsuit that came out of White Bear Lake. Some cities have made some agreements. We made an agreement to, our priority was to stay on our well water as opposed to service water. So we made that arrangement with them, which gives us the right, if they moved on to try to push for that, we could at least have the argument to have that. Both parties have to be in agreement of that, for that to move forward. And not everybody got that. A while back, we had closed HRA meeting for 2082 Schreier. We were gonna try to purchase that property. Ended up, that fell through. Were not able to acquire the property. And that kind of finalizes that issue with that. More to come on that, on maybe other properties. And we have our communications position that starts tomorrow. So ABA's first AOB tomorrow. And we'll get back with the city newsletter and get the information out to the public more. And that's all I have.
You were gonna, when we discussed, you were gonna look at maybe understanding how much, if there, what kind of, if there's been vandalism and understand that with the parks and anything will happen with that?
Not...
I've been hearing some tweets of Casey Lake got a bunch of stuff in one of their restrooms, mud all over throwing. Is there...
Yes.
How's it been so far?
Yes. Since you first started, there's been many instances. The latest was, must have been kids, I would imagine, threw mud all over inside of the bathrooms up at Silver Lake. Unfortunately, we've had ongoing, whether or not it's people trying to stay inside of the, some of the restrooms or, you know, breaking the baby changing stations or, you know, taking dryers off the walls and taking them with them, taking a rock and smashing the locks on the doors, which are $2,500 apiece. I mean, it's, it's frustrating. I just want to keep you guys updated as we learn new stuff. We've just kind of dealt with it in the past. But, you know, when the city has to take a stance and, you know, close something down because something's broken there from vandalism or what have you, we'll just try to keep you guys posted on the issues that we're having. And if we have to make decisions like that, the public should be a little more understanding with that, but...
Yeah, I would appreciate it. Because this is, like you said, $2,500 for a lock and all this stuff. This adds up quickly. Is there a spot where we just have to lock and put porta-potties out there? The, you know, the regular plastic ones?
Right.
If they keep getting vandalized and costing the city this much money. I know last year was crazy and it sounds like we're starting off this year, too. So I appreciate Ron and Randy to keep an eye so we can understand, you know, what kind of money. Because that's, that's a lot of money going out the door and just where it's at.
The time spent on some of that is amazing. I mean, they're removing the plumbing or what have you in these. It's, and usually that stuff picks up after the school's out, so we'll have to keep a good eye on it.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because I think we just need to, that adds up quickly and just understand. And the safety, I mean, if somebody goes in there that really wants to use the bathroom, I mean, what are they getting themselves into? And if somebody's staying in there, I mean, there's just a lot of, lot of liability, I think, that can, that could happen with things like this as well. Thanks for keeping us informed.
In terms of like those individuals that are staying in there, are they able to be, there's like shelters and whatnot. Are they able to be taken to one if they're willing?
The PD, is my understanding that they have done that in the past, for people at least are willing to do that.
Right, right, right. Willing, yep.
Yep. Indeed.
All right, thank you.
Anything further, thank you.
Appreciate it. Reports from council commissions and committees. Councilmember Norby?
The planning commission is coming up this Thursday. It's somewhat of a light agenda, but it's a workshop discussion on introduction and goal setting for the planning commission this coming Thursday.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wong?
The Arts and Culture Commission have a big event tomorrow, sorry, Thursday at 5:30 PM. And it's the snowy reveal. So all the businesses that have made, had contributed and purchased a snowy, they've been promoted online and the artists as well have been promoted online. So big thank you to Public Works for helping get those snowies all, that whole litter situated for, for the event. So I certainly invite all of you to attend at 5:30 if you can. And I think it'll be a good time. There's been a lot of very, very positive response online. So I think we owe that to ourselves and our city to kind of ride and celebrate. So hope you can make it. And then the next meeting is tomorrow at 6:30 in the chambers.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Schwer?
I'm excited for your commission. It's come a long way. And it's awesome that they're, it's here. Parks and Recreation, Housie Park is about 70% completed. And the next meeting is June 26th at 6:30 here in council chambers.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cole?
Nothing to report. There was no EDA meeting last month. Next EDA meeting is here next Tuesday, the 11th, at 4 o'clock in chambers.
And last meeting, you swore in two new ones, or?
We approved two new ones at the last council meeting.
Nice. Thank you. Awesome.
Are there still open?
Yes.
Okay.
There's still, I believe, one.
One?
One spot open.
And then in terms of all the other commissions, are they all full?
Are my commissions full?
Yeah. I haven't heard anything open.
That's a good sign.
Yeah.
Great.
Awesome. Well, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to general business. Councilmember Norby?
I have one question, and this is, I believe, towards Jack. I'm curious if Mr. Frandl, or city manager Frandl, has the power to temporarily do an emergency action and change the park hours now until we officially debate it? Is that something within his purview? That he could enact? Or, I mean, because it sounded like we were somewhat in agreement with the chief of changing the hours, but I know we need to discuss it, go through the full process. Could Mr. Frandl take that executive action? I don't, I don't know the wording.
So I just read through that, and it said that city manager has the ability to allow somebody to spend more time there or layer there. But as far as a blanket, I'd have to refer to Jack.
Apologies. So by, there are hours where no one is allowed to be in the parks in the ordinance. The ordinance does not provide that there are hours when people are allowed to be in the parks. So we've not restricted ourselves on that. And, you know, otherwise, we generally get to, you know, take action as essentially the landowner and making those decisions of how to organize those. You know, probably long-term, we would like to see an ordinance amendment, but I don't see any problem with a short-term amendment to that from, coming from the city.
With that answer from the city manager, I would like a little discussion to direct Brian Frandl that this would be a good choice to do a temporary action and change the park hours?
Well, I, there's a few things to discuss, because I had this conversation with Soren. And I know it's been mentioned, we do have one city on one side of us that does a half hour before sunrise and a half hour after sunset. In talking with our attorney, he said that usually becomes a look on diluted where some people just don't quite understand. It's, it's not as easy and nice to put on a sign by the park. So it's easier to go 7:00 to 10:00 or whatever hours you feel. So I would want your guys', because if we're gonna take the time to do that, that means making signs and putting them out. So we kind of have a general idea of what you want to do for hours. And this is, can we discuss that right now without it being on the agenda necessarily?
Yeah, this is, you know, this is a discussion for direction. We're not taking any official action, not passing any resolutions on this today.
Ron?
Ultimately, yes, it would. It would be the same hours for that.
No, no.
Nope.
That's a great thought.
Well, how about skating during the winter time when lights are out and at 5:00?
There are special exceptions to that. So it includes, whether or not there is a skating rink or a football field or soccer field that has lights. There were a few exceptions in the ordinance.
And my thought process is that this would be like a one-month executive order until it comes before us, for us to evaluate. Because it sounded like it was gonna come before us, either the next one or the one after. So this was just a, my thought, a temporary executive order from Mr. Frandl until the council has time to discuss. Not a long-term, you know, we're figuring out what we're doing in the winter. Just a short-term, until we have time to officially draft ordinances and things of that nature. What are your guys' feelings? I mean, it's five of us up here, not just me.
Well, we currently have rentals in those areas. So if that affects their rentals, we don't want to mess with their rentals. They've already placed that on the books. I mean, that would be my only concern is, really, Ron made a good point. If it affects the rentals, then, but I also understand the park piece, too. I mean...
Is there an opportunity to change the hours with the exception of the rentals? So if there is a rental, then?
So I believe we go through the year for the rentals that people can start signing up for. So do you want the current ones to stand at 11:00 and, but then close the park at 10:00? Or do you just go ahead and change it so the rentals, people have already rented it, bringing that back to 10:00 and just having that conversation with them?
I did see some other ones that close at 9:00 as well.
That's an option. Well, if you're...
We don't have lights out there. By 9:00 rolls around, usually everybody's...
If you're giving me that responsibility, I mean, that doesn't mean that you guys can think about it and then you can get back to me as well. And then we can go from there instead of putting you on the spot right now, if that works.
I mean, for me, I would like some type of resolution placed before the 4th of July.
Yes.
And I can work with Jack on that, for sure.
That's, that's the big one, and that's the one that lives on and on. And we had, we've had consistent issues year over year after year. I think I met Public Works out there on the 5th of July last year. And just the stuff people left.
Yep. It's a hard day for the officers.
And we need to give, the, the struggle for me is if we close the park at 10:00 and the building is open until 11:00, how does that give our police department, any jurisdiction to go out and flush the parking lots, to move people along? I think that they need to coincide time-wise. And I think an hour adjustment right now will, is probably palatable for most rentals. And then we can take a look at it the following year if we want to cut it to 9:30. But that's just an opinion of one.
I was gonna add, for the time being, 10:00, I'm open to that. If we're looking at making some sort of...
So if we want something on the books before the 4th, well, I suppose, either the second, or our next meeting is the 18th, or we have July 2nd.
And most of this stuff is at Casey Park, it seems like. And one good thing, they have the big, huge sign out front. So as far as ordinances, that sign could say park closes that, this now, and it's lit that way until the 4th of July. You know what I mean? Because that seems to be the park where the most, you know, with Silver Lake, usually they're out of there by dusk. I mean, there's not many ever over by Silver Lake.
Hasn't been too many issues at Housie either.
No, so...
Not yet. Is a key word.
Yep, exactly. And you never know, but at least we have signage. You were talking about signage there. We have that big, huge sign out front that can do that.
Yeah, I think we should probably come up with something. Because Ray did say, the word is out. So just because it hit Casey doesn't mean it's gonna hit Housie, Northwood, Polar, Silver, Dorothy. I'm getting there, aren't I?
You got a lot of little parks.
Country club.
So are we, um...
What is the thought from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
I'm good to start with that, at least until we get our feet and then understand where everybody is and just at least bring it down to where the average park's around there. I don't want to be the one open the latest, which we are right now. It sounds like 11:00 o'clock, so I don't want to be that. Would rather be the one closing a little bit earlier than later.
I like the 7:00 AM to 10:00.
Let's start with that.
So my next question, so to try to do enforcement, signs would be, what would be next? Or otherwise, we're just have police showing up saying, "At this time, you guys need to be gone or out of here." And just trying to be as clean as possible.
Do signs and then turn around and decide that that's... Are everybody comfortable with 10:00?
Yeah.
You are? You're, you're guys are right on top of the park. I don't know what, a lot, what happens at Casey as far as, is there a lot of traffic in the evenings? Like I told you, Silver Lake doesn't have anything, but...
Depends.
I mean, from a, from a summer standpoint, I mean, we're, it's nine, sunset's around nine. Can't tell by looking outside right now. But sunset around this time of year is about 9:00. And we get a, it gets a little bit later as the month of June goes on, and then it shortens. So for a short-term fix, we're good, we're good with, I'm good with it. And then we can take a look at what winter looks like with, you know, the, the two or three pleasure rinks that we've got open for skating.
And there are special indoor ordinance now on that, so...
So, and I don't think the ball fields go, do they turn the lights on at Casey anymore on that football, on that baseball field?
It depends. I don't think a whole lot, but sometimes. I'm just, when you guys are talking about these, I mean, temporary signs, do you want, I mean, I'll order some temporary signs that we can just go stick out there quick? Because it'll take a while if we do something, you know, for me to get like legit signs.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, temporary.
Very comfortable.
Yeah. Get some temporary ones we can stick in.
Light up Casey with the hours on it. I think that's gonna be the biggest thing.
Okay.
Still leaning towards 9:30, but I, 10's better.
Is 7:00 also, 7:00 in the morning, is that too late or early, or is that consistent?
You get walkers out there before then, but...
Yeah.
It does, you don't get crowds.
You'd hope not. I mean, yes and no, right?
You'll never see the mayor walking at 7:00.
Okay, I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
You wanted to come up, didn't you, Ron?
Is there any other opinions you have on this yourself that you can think of? This is in your territory, so...
Since you're here, when does the vandalism in the restrooms get done? During the day or after? Do you have any idea?
You know what? It happens at all times. Because I get a lot of pictures and texts from the cleaning crew that is going into Silver Lake at 8:00 at night or 6:00 at night. So it is, it varies when that, when that stuff happens. And it seems like it goes in spurts when, when stuff happens, you know? We've had the, the hand air dryer stolen off the walls at Rotary Park. What we do to try to, or when people are staying in the buildings, we change, we have the locks, lock at a different time. You know, instead of being open from 7:00 AM till 9:00 o'clock at night, we have them closed at 7:00, 7:00 PM. And just kind of change the timing up of that kind of stuff. Or we locked, we locked Rotary Park. We had one bathroom closed last year for most of the season because the lock got busted twice in a month. You know, we had $5,000 in the lock, so, and, and we couldn't get the locks for it. So it, it varies. I'm gonna try to, when this stuff happens, I told all, all the guys at Public Works to send me photos. We'll go out, evaluate it. We'll let you guys know, just to keep you guys in the loop on kind of how much we're dealing with this. But yeah, I, there's no real...
Well, it's electrical hazard. Somebody's pulling off the vent, there's a bare wire there. I mean, there's, there's definitely issues with that.
Yeah, and my, I guess my opinion on the park hours, you know, I think having that shelter rental plays into it. As far, I, I think, I agree with Councilmember Cole. If we're gonna do something, if it's 10:00, I, I think that rental has to be at 10:00, too, because I don't know how you, how you'll be able to decipher if we're gonna try to enforce that. People, if they're gonna be there, if they can be in the rental till 11:00 and other people gotta be out of the park at 10:00, I think it'll just be really tough to enforce that. But that's just my opinion. And again, I've looked at some of the other cities and, you know, it's dusk till dawn or, you know, a half hour. It's, it's kind of tough, because in the wintertime, versus... half hour. It's, it's kind of tough, because in the wintertime, versus the summertime, you know, I, I guess, I don't, the variable we have is that, that park rental, or the, you know, the people renting that. So maybe the hours, you know, if we come a time, 9:00, or if it's 10:00, or if it's 9:30, I, you know, that might be, I think it would be, be more, it'd be better, be more consistent with that, a time where everyone has to be out of the parks, but.
Of course, before, if people are cleaners, have they been having issues trying to get people to wrap up by 11:00? Are they still getting there at midnight, and people are still wrapping up? How has it been that way? I know last year, you, they said that it was very hard to get people out.
It was, I mean, it, you know, they're, they're there to clean up, just because, you know, as soon as they can, just because the next people can actually be in that shelter at 7:00 in the next morning. I have not heard a lot of that this year from them, as far as getting the people out, so I don't know. I mean, me personally, too, I think with our shelter rentals, it's pretty hands-off as far as the city goes. Now, I don't want to be the person to have to do this, but to me, when we're, if someone can go rent that shelter, they can do everything online. They get a code sent to them, they show up. There's no one there greeting them, saying, all right, here's this building, look at how it looks. It's perfectly clean right now. This is how we expect it to look, you know. You need to take all your stuff. There's no checkout, where someone comes and checks them out at night. You know, and I don't think it's a cleaner's job to be telling these people they're past their time, you know, to, to be out of there. Again, I don't know how that works, but, you know, we're running it like a, you know, event center, and people are kind of being able to run roughshod in what they do, and when they decide they want to go. And the, the janitorial services, people shouldn't be the ones having to kick them out, you know. So again, that's just my opinion. I don't want to be the guy that has to go down there every night, tell them, make sure someone's, you know, they're leaving, but, you know, maybe we can look at doing something, however that works.
Well, to my knowledge, that hasn't happened yet this year, but it did happen several times last year. And of course, they're, they shouldn't be going in there and confronting anybody. So when it's past that time, they'll give them a little time past 11:00, and if they're still not clearing out, then they call the police.
Police, yeah.
And then they have to come out.
Yeah, and it did, it was a lot, it was, they dealt with it a lot previously, and I haven't heard a whole lot about it lately, but.
I just think we just have to decide on the time, and then reach out to everybody who's rented, and saying, you know, we, we've had some changes, so we're gonna be closing at 10:00. If that affects what you're doing, you can have your money back. Otherwise, it's 10:00 o'clock.
No problem.
That's just the bet. We're, put it at that and be done with it.
I'm just gonna make one other comment for just parks and grass in North St. Paul in general, for what we're taking care of, is we've had so much rain. We haven't been able to mow our ball fields down at McKnight, and that's built on a swamp. It's probably a foot long. I mean, we can't even walk on it, let alone get a lawnmower on it. So-
So goats.
Pardon me?
So goats.
Well, yes. So anyway, if you guys hear comments, we are checking them constantly, multiple times a day. We haven't forgotten about it. We've had some complaints in Dorothy Parks. We were dealing with today, where the grass was two feet long. And I went out there, and it was actually two feet long, but it was in a, it's in a big puddle.
Exactly.
So I just want you guys to know that we are monitoring it hourly, and having arguments amongst ourselves, whether we're getting, I actually bought tow ropes for the lawnmowers, because they kept getting stuck. So, anyway, just to let you know, we are on it as best we can, but there's some lawn grass right now, and we're just-
So I have to ask you now, is it better to have a lot of snow and less rain, or is it better to have no snow and a lot of rain?
It's kind of like asking if you'd rather drown or burn.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, thanks. We build our parks on swamps. That should be our motto on our sign in North St. Paul.
One other question for Brian. Would you be willing, and I don't know if this is you or Ray, at other places I've seen, and my terminology is gonna get screwed up here, but the police mobile centers, where it's a trailer with a long light pole, and sometimes those poles have cameras. If something like that is available, and if Chief Red-
Ray, I always say that.
Okay.
Chief Ray.
Is interested, would that be something worthwhile to see if we could do for Casey on the 4th?
As a rental situation?
As a rental situation.
We can start looking into that, no problem.
Didn't we approve?
We approved it in the CIP.
The CIP, correct.
Yeah. So it just hasn't been purchased, to my knowledge.
But that's a purchase, just rental?
Yeah.
Right?
We already approved it for this, this year's budget to purchase one, so it's, yeah, I mean.
I think it's a great idea, have something out there on the 4th.
Do we have our, of course, fireworks, we can't do that. Didn't we do drones, or not? Can't remember.
Yeah, we have two of them.
We have two drones.
I mean, that's all over parks, too. You know, you're not supposed to be shooting off fireworks there, anyway, so. But something else we can use is drones.
Probably procedures in which I think we reviewed, like policies, and when those can be dispatched.
There is.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I can't remember exactly if that was one of the conditions.
Yep. Reports have to be made, and all that good stuff with those requirements.
We have all the toys, why?
Can we get a helicopter?
So are we in agreement with 10:00 o'clock?
Yep.
Are everybody?
Yeah. To be clear, is this a temporary situation, or we, we can put up temp signs? Are we looking at then going forward with permanent signs, or more conversation to come?
I think more conversation.
I like more conversation, but let's do something now.
Yeah.
If we could get that sign up in Casey, whoever runs the sign up there.
Can you also loop in Sarah, so she can send an email to Parks and Rec?
Absolutely.
Please.
Get that, so, focused. Well, thank you. That was a great, great suggestion. Appreciate it. Kate, I think it's you now.
Oh, I think it is.
I'm trying to remember where I left off.
Um, I, it's June. Happy Pride Month, and that's, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Shweer?
I do want to take a second just to reflect upon Casey Lake. It was a tragic situation. We all received calls that evening from City Manager Frandl. Some of us were out of town, some of us were at home. And me personally, being afar, my heart went out to the entire community. I, I took it pretty rough, knowing that that is so close to home, and I live across the street like Lisa does, or Tim down the street. But everybody in that park, and also reviewing social media that evening, they were terrified. So we recognize that. I recognize that. I was, as a, as a member of this community, it's scary to know that we had that in our back, backyard. So, again, thank you to the police chief and our staff, but very much on top of it, thank you to Maplewood, White Bear, Ramsey County Sheriff, BCA, Woodbury, Washington County. I mean, everybody played a big role in that. And Public Works, thank you for being out there, helping to clean up the next day, repair things. I know that this has, this is, this is scary, and I know Ray and the teams and Public Works is on top of this, as we work out more details. I also want everyone to know that the car show is this Friday, and it's at 7:00, 6:00 o'clock, excuse me, 6:00 o'clock. And this is a big time of year for our city, is the first car show. So come out, enjoy, have fun.
Thank you very much.
I have nothing, other than it's gonna be a fun rest of the week, with Thursday night, with the, with, with the, with the snowy reveals. I'm excited for that, and car show, and the new tenants that we have out there selling their, their goods on the street.
Yes.
I look forward to visiting all of them.
Definitely.
I'm done.
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to also, it was a nice, I got a call about at the park last Friday at 11:30, St. Peter, Street Beach Church. Both priests were up there, and we had a nice little prayer and blessing, and it was a very nice ceremony to be able to walk the park, and be able to say prayers over it, just to understand, you know, and be able to, you know, a lot of the neighbors showed up, so we were able to do that. So it was a really nice, nice moment, and be able to be out there for that. So I just wanted to thank, thanks Church of St. Pete for doing that, and it was very special. If that's, I will call for adjournment.
So?
So move, Councilmember Shweer, second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and June 18th, if I remember right, if I saw that at the top.